Twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. My other commitments have become too great for me to be able to feel, to fulfill the requirements of my position as Alderman, and I feel it is best for me to make room for someone with the time and energy to devote to the job. It has been an honor serving the constituents of Alton over the past five years. I have had the pleasure to work with great council members, and I'm proud of everything we have accomplished during my tenure. I have no doubt the board will continue these successes in the future. If I can be of any assistance with the transition, please don't hesitate to ask. Best regards from Brian Campbell. It's time we would give the floor to, for one last time, to Alderman Campbell for remarks.
Um, I would just like to say, uh, thank you to the citizens of Alton. Uh, I've gotten to meet real, some really great citizens, people. Uh, I've gotten to work with some unbelievable, uh, fellow council members. I have full-hearted faith that, uh, you guys will continue to do, uh, good work. Uh, Betsy is replacing me, is, uh, really excited. I know she's gonna do a wonderful job. And, uh, Mayor, uh, you've done a great job in this past year, so I look forward to seeing the, what the future holds, and I hope, uh, you allow me to, uh, participate, maybe not, I mean, obviously not in this manner, but in the city, so, thank you.
All right, now, this time. Need a motion and a second to approve the resignation of Alderman Brian Campbell.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Strabel, second by Alderwoman Brown. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain.
So. Thank you.
Okay, so now we are moving on to our appointments. And. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Betsy Allen to, as a replacement for Brian Campbell, to serve out his term, serve out the term of Alderman for this, for this administration, for this, for this time, for the rest of, uh, his tenure. I have a, uh, mo- a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Brake, second by Alderwoman Brown. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay, motion, motion carries. Like to call, uh, Betsy Allen to come up. Let's, let's get her around. That clap was a little premature, sorry about that.
Thank you.
She's gonna be sworn in, and then we'll be able to see her.
Aye, Betsy Allen, having been appointed to the office of First Ward Alderman in the city of Alton, in the county of Madison, afore said.
She's gotta say that. She's gotta say that.
She's gotta repeat it.
She's gotta repeat that.
You're gonna make her memorize a lot. She's gonna be memorizing a lot.
I, Betsy Allen.
I, Betsy Allen.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of First Ward Alderman.
To the office of First Ward Alderman.
In the city of Alton.
In the city of Alton.
And county of Madison.
County of Madison.
Afore said.
Afore said.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of First Ward Alderman.
The duties of the.
Of First Ward Alderman. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Okay, can I just tell you a sign here?
Okay. Now.
Now you're good.
Gentlemen, I present to you Alderwoman Betsy Allen.
I'm honored and excited. Appreciate the opportunity.
Any words she spoke?
Um, uh, no, I am just, other than I'm just honored to be here, I look forward to working with everyone. I've lived in Alton all my life, and, uh, just excited to see what we can do here, to work with each one of you. Okay.
Now that she has been appointed, we want to do a, another call for roll to accept the appointment.
Allen.
Here.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Seven present, no absent.
Okay, we have one more, um, appointment. And that is for Deputy Director, the Internet Technology Department, Michael E. Weber, Jr. Would like to make a motion to approve his appointment as Deputy Director of I.T. I have a motion and a second.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Brown, second by Alderwoman Elliott. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Allen.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, no absent.
Next, we have an appointment. And it's actually two, we'll just read off both of these, 'cause it's both to the James Killian Beautification and Enhancement Committee. The names are Crystal Love and Karen Clanton. Crystal will be an acting member, and Karen, since she is a city employee, will be an ex-officio member without the authority to, without the authority to vote, but will act and, and, and serve in the capacity as a member except for no voting rights. So, need a motion and a second to accept these appointments.
Both appointments.
One at a time, okay. So this, this one is for Crystal Love. Motion, motion by who aga- who again?
Stephanie.
Stephanie, Alderwoman Elliott, second by Alderwoman Brown. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Allen.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, no absent.
All right, need a motion and a second for appointment of Karen Clanton as ex-officio member of the James Killian Park Beautification and Enhancement Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Elliott, second by Alderwoman Brown. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Allen.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, no absent.
Okay, motions carry. Number six, we have the approval of the regular, the minutes of the regular meeting of February ninth, twenty-twenty-two. Motion and a second placed on file.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Brown, second by Alderwoman Elliott, chair so orders. And number seven, we have the report of officers, the annual treasures, report of cash receipts and disbursements of the fiscal year ending March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, monthly treasures report for January twenty-twenty-two, estimated fire loss for January twenty-twenty-two, largest single fire loss for January twenty-twenty-two, monthly fire damage report to assessor's office, January twenty-twenty-two, James Killian Park Beautification and Enhancement Committee minutes of January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Need a motion and a second to place on file.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Keener, second by Alderwoman Elliott, chair so orders. Number eight, we have the report of standing committee. And we'll turn this over to Alderwoman McAfee.
Number A, committee of the whole, I would like to make a motion to place on file, committee of the whole meeting report for February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two.
I second.
Number A, resolution, refinanced committee bills be allowed and payment made, I need a motion, I make a motion to approve. Number B, resolution, authorizing the closure of Broadway to facilitate the Fat Tuesday Survival Event, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Alderwoman, we needed to call a roll on.
Yeah. On the bills.
Oh, sorry, okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Allen.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, no absent.
I'll read B again. B, resolution, authorizing the closure of Broadway to facilitate the Fat Tuesday Survival Event, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Allen.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, no absent.
Number C, resolution, to consider amending Title IX, Chapter Seven, Section Two of the City Code of Alton, Illinois pertaining to nuisance properties, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Allen.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Ayes, no nays, no absent.
Number D, resolution, to consider amending Title Four, Chapter Ten, and Title Four, Chapter Ten, Sections One, Four, Five, and Six of the City of Alton Code of Ordinances, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Allen.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
No nays, no nays, no absent.
Number E, resolution, authorizing the execution of a letter of intent between the City of Alton and student athletics leading tomorrow, I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Allen.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott. Keener.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, no absent.
Number F, resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Alton, Illinois, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the local public agency agreement for federal participation between Illinois Department of Transportation and the City of Alton for safe routes to school phase two, I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Allen.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, no absent.
Number G, resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Alton, that the local public agency engineering services agreement for construction, engineering services between Shepherd, Morgan, and Schwab, Inc., and the City of Alton is hereby approved, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to sign said agreement, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Allen.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Ayes, no nays, no absent.
Number H, resolution be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Alton, Illinois, that the following described streets, roads, structure be improved under the Illinois Highway Code, with work shall be done by contract for College Avenue from Holman Street to Johnson Street, Rock Springs Drive from Memorial Drive to College Avenue, Johnson Street from College Avenue to Tremont, and College Avenue from Johnson Street to Pleasant Street in an amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Allen. Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott. Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, no absent.
Before we move on to number nine, ordinance for first, for first reading, I do want to introduce our new Deputy I.T. Director, because he is in, present with us, and so we would ask him to stand at this time, this is Michael Weber. Would you like to have, say anything?
I'm just very excited to join the city, and, uh, I'm, 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 I'm a, I have a, plenty of roots here, and, uh, um, just, uh, I'm just excited to serve the city, and, uh, help facilitate and make the, the I.T. department grow, and, uh, help out everyone else, if everyone's like it, it's easier.
Thank you. All right, number nine. Ordinances for first reading. Madam Clerk. Mayor Froten.
Madam Clerk, can we have the ordinance, the first reading of ordinance number seventy-eight twenty-five?
Ordinance number seventy-eight twenty-five, and ordinance authorizing the dissolution of the four-hour, Monday through Friday restricted parking on East Fifth Street. Ordinance number seventy-eight twenty-five for first reading.
I'd like to make a motion to lay it over.
I second.
Madam Clerk, can we have the ordinance, first, first reading of ordinance number seventy-eight twenty-six?
Ordinance number seventy-two eighty-six.
Seventy-eight twenty-six.
Seventy-eight twenty-six. Seventy-eight twenty-six, and ordinance authorizing the removal of no parking signs on Greenwood Street. Ordinance seventy-eight twenty-six for first reading.
I make a motion to lay it over.
Second.
That's all there is, ma'am.
Thank you. Number ten, public forum addressing city business, I see that there is one, Mike Swigle wants to speak about getting poker machines at Swigles, wanting to see when the C-two license will be available.
I make a motion, ma'am, that we give Mr. Swigle five minutes.
Second.
Call the roll.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Allen.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, no absent.
Okay, Mr. Swigle, you have, you have the floor for five minutes, sir.
I just need a minute. Hello, Mayor Goings, your illustration, all the people and members of the audience. I want to thank everyone in the immediate vicinity of our store for the overwhelming support in this endeavor. Out of the eligible people, uh, no one sent me an unfavorable response. Furthermore, I would like to thank greater Alton community for patronizing our store over the years. I want to thank everyone involved regarding consideration for Swigles obtaining a C-two, uh, wine pour-and-serve on-premise liquor license, and ultimately video gaming, hopefully. Uh, since eight, since nineteen thirty-six, our family store has operated, a grocery store in the Alton area. Through the years, we have helped the community in various ways. I want to continue to support the community like our family has done over the last eighty-six years. Video gaming will allow us to continue to support the greater community, uh, for future generations. Uh, I'm grateful to everybody for allowing me to, this opportunity, uh, to speak in closing our congratulations on becoming an Alderwoman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
That's all.
Number eleven, approval of actions taken under suspension of rules at prior meeting. A, resolution regarding improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for Milton Road from Edgewood Avenue to Hillcrest Avenue in the amount of two thousand six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, need a motion and a second.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Elliott, second by Alderman Keener. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Allen.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, no absent.
Number B, resolution regarding authorizing the authority to apply for park commission funds from the Madison County Parks and Recreation Commission, need a motion and a second to approve.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Brown, second by Alderman Keener. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Allen.
Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Ayes, no nays, no absent.
All right, number twelve, comments or resolutions from the City Council, uh, we will start off with Ward One. Alder, Alderwoman.
Um, none at this time.
Do you have none?
Nope.
McAfee?
Yes, I have one, I'm actually reading one for her ward.
Okay.
So, um, resolution authorizing the no parking signs to be placed on the west side of the four-hundred block of Easton Street, whereas the City Council of City of Alton has conducted a traffic study, and it was determined that the no parking signs would be necessary and advisable for the public safety and welfare to be placed on the west side of four-hundred block of Easton Street in the city of Alton, Illinois, to promote the safety of pedestrian, pedestrian traffic, and now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Alton, Illinois, that the Public Works Department, Police Department, and Fire Department are hereby authorized and directed to fixuate no parking signs on the west side of the four-hundred block of Easton Street. Um, I'd like to refer this to Committee of the Whole.
Second.
That's all I have this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McAfee. Alderman Strabel.
All I have is, I'd like to.
Okay, sure.
All I have is, I'd like to welcome Alderwoman Allen.
Thank you so much.
I look forward to working with you for the next three-plus years. Also, I'd like to thank, uh, Brian Campbell.
Yeah.
Um, and everything he's brought to council. I know personally, he's helped me since the first day I took office, and I thank him for that. That's all I have tonight.
Thank, thank you, Alderman Strabel. Alderwoman Brown?
I would like to, um, I'm looking at the history of our council, and I think this is the first time that we've had four women on our council! Welcome, and hey, looking forward to working with you, and I have nothing else. Yeah.
Okay. Alder, Alderman Brake?
I want to congratulate our new Alderperson. I think she's well-equipped in, in, uh, business transactions and things that we need a lot of help with, and, uh, welcome to the council.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderwoman Elliott?
I have one, resolution to commence with demolition proceedings concerning five-seventeen With Street Avenue, sorry, whereas it is necessary to effect the demolition of certain structures deemed unsafe under sixty-five I.L.C.S. five slash eleven dash thirty-one dash one, the owners of which have neglected or refuses to perform required demolition, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Alton, Illinois, that its officials and agents are hereby authorized to pursue appropriate legal action against such properties in the circuit court as listed below, five-seventeen With Avenue, and I'd like to refer this to the committee.
Second.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Alderman Keener?
Nothing original from me, I just want to echo, um, what some of the other council members have said, welcome to, uh, Alderwoman Allen, I look forward to working with you, and, uh, a final thank you to, uh, Brian Campbell for, um, his, his years of service and, and guidance that he's, he's offered to me since I've, I've, uh, joined this, um, council, so, that's all I have. Thank you.
And I'd like to echo the sentiments of council members and welcoming Betsy to, to the first ward, as First Ward Alderwoman, and I also want to thank Alderman, uh, former Alderman Brian Campbell for all his hard work and dedication that he's put in the last five years, and how much he has helped me, and, and beginning of my tenure as mayor, and it's just kind of, it goes full circle, because Brian, uh, was one of my dare students when I was on the police department.
Wow.
And so, just to sit there and across from the table the first time meeting him, and him, him reminding me that I was his dare officer, I thought was pretty cool, so, once again, I want to thank Brian for his service and wish him the best in his future endeavors. All right. Can you have a comment before we move to adjourn? To adjourn.
To adjourn.
I second.
Motion by Alderwoman Elliott, second by Alderwoman Brown. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Allen. Aye.
McAfee.
Aye.
Strabel.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brake.
Aye.
Elliot.
Aye.
Keener.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, no opposites.
All right. Everybody have a great evening. This meeting is adjourned. Drive safe.
Yes, I need to study. Hi.
Yeah, I know, man. Something for you. Good. And busy.
Appreciate it. I would love to. Learn everything there is to know. Yes. Can you give me yours?